All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Mashpee School Committee meeting of October 24th, 2018. We call the meeting to order at 5:32. And first item of business is the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, on a nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. Next is a public comment, and we do not have any public comment at this time. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the ISICOM Special Education teacher. Please come to the mic as well. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I was just asked to come and speak to you about, um, on the 27th of September, our school was gifted over $10,000 worth of supplies and materials through people all over the world, based on a contest that I won on Instagram through Kristen Bell, Busy Phillips, and a number of different other celebrities that have started doing it. One casual Friday night, I entered on Instagram, right place, right time, and I was chosen due to our population and due to just sheer luck, I guess. So she posted the picture on the 27th of September, and ever since then, we've been receiving just an overwhelming amount of donations, things like flexible seating, things like books, different learning materials, just a ton of stuff to help our kids learn. Some of the coolest things that we've gotten are the flexible seating options, which we've seen put into action already for the past month, and our kids' focus, especially the kids on my caseload, the special education kids, has improved immensely. They're able to sit in groups where they weren't able to do that before. They're able to participate and focus, and it's such a joy, especially for myself as a special ed teacher, where these kids, you know, were having behavior issues before. They couldn't sit still. They can do that now, and they can attend, which is great. So it's real, it was a true gift that we got.
Can you share how you developed your list of items that have come to COOS?
Sure. So it was really a collaboration between myself, the other special education teachers, the occupational therapists, the speech therapists, as well as the other grade-level teachers. When I was initially chosen, I spoke to my inclusion team when we put together a list, and that was purchased all in five minutes. So we had to really think hard. So we got a lot of occupational therapy supplies, weighted blankets, body socks, things that really just supplement what we already have. Additionally, we got a lot for the clinical department, so we got things that, CBT games, things that will really make clinical work accessible for our children, which is important. It was a huge collaboration effort between pretty much everyone at KCC. Yeah, it was great.
Thanks.
Can you just, for my identification, what is a flexible seat? I'm picturing a beanbag.
So actually, that is-
I'm assuming it's something more than that.
So we did get three beanbag chairs.
Okay. That's very flexible.
Yeah. It's just ways for the students to be able to access seating options that aren't necessarily your standard typical desk and seat. It works for all kids, but I think especially with kids on, you know, IEPs and 504s, it really allows them to access different things in the curriculum while they're still moving, but they're able to sit. So, for example, we got those wonderful beanbag chairs. Additionally, we got floor desks, so they're able to sit on the floor and do partner work in different groups in the classroom and still write. They also got rocker chairs, or they're more like scoop chairs, so the little buckets that they sit in, that they can write at and sit on during small group work or during whole group instruction. We got some ball chairs, so some yoga ball chairs with stabilizers that allow kids who love to be in motion, to be able to be in motion, but still be able to sit and do their work. I have a ball chair in my office. It's great. Highly recommend it.
Excellent. Thank you.
And you mentioned that, you said, are things still coming in?
Yes. We're still getting a very slow amount of kind of single items at this point. I know that there are other teachers who have been featured since mine. Apparently, you can still access my wish list. It's really very few and far between at this point, though. It was really a solid two-week period where I was getting calls from the post office every day to come pick up three or four kind of carols of boxes. And what was wonderful about this was the kids actually were able to help unload the boxes from the trucks and bring them and open everything themselves. So they were able to take ownership of what we got, and they saw everything, and they were able to really, really be a huge part of this whole experience. So they wrote thank you notes to our donors, and I was able to send them out. We wrote one class thank you note, and I was able to take a picture and send it out to some people. Not everyone put their name. But what the most touching part of it was those who donated did actually write a little kind of note of encouragement for our school and for our class. So for those, you know, thousands of donations, I got thousands of notes, too, just really encouraging, which is beautiful. It was very emotional to read every single one. It was great.
So cool.
Yeah. It was wonderful. Truly.
Anybody else?
Just want to say thank you for your situational awareness and getting this done for the kids in our schools. So it's great to hear.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
It was really nice to just open the paper and see a great story about, you know, and just see the kids and really appreciate, especially in these kind of lean budget times, that there was funding coming from somewhere that, you know, went directly to the students. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the report of the business administrator and superintendent. Mr. Paul Phong.
I'll start off with the 2019 budget, the actual, which is in the packet. I'm going to highlight a couple of things, and then I'll let the change in. On page, page eight, new packet, technology system line. As you know, we've not budgeted anything for the technology, and that's where we're going to use the $355,000 worth of choice. As you can see, we're at a negative 348,753.70, and this includes a large amount of software as well as hardware. With the help of the assistant superintendent, even building next year's budget, we pulled a lot of it, a lot of it out of the schools and put it centralized into the technology. So we're not, I feel comfortable with the 348 right now. I'd like to just leave it there. There's a couple of small other things I'd like to add to it, because we will have the option to transfer to a general entry to bring that back. And we don't want to do that as the choice money can roll from one year to the next. So I'll watch that closely when I feel I've reached the top of the mountain, I'll come to the committee meeting and think of that. We've purchased, I would say we've purchased most of our, most of the stuff we want to purchase. There's always something growing. On page 10, transportation. We do have some of the transportation in comber, but you'll notice the sped transportation is at 213,291. That represents the out-of-district, so that could fluctuate every month, because you could have someone coming back to the district, someone going out, more than one student going out. So that's the only thing that we have in comber. I try to encumber everything, so I know when I look at those balances, those are the balances that I have to work with to offset the 348,000 that I just talked about. So, because we want to try to offset that with the funds that we're saving in our line item.
Do we currently have anyone looking to continue to, maybe for the bunch?
I, I, I'm hoping the 62,000 is enough. You know, again, that's something that fluctuates again, not from month to week. We have about seven.
Seven kids.
Okay. Any quick math question?
Go ahead.
On that line, you're talking about the sped transportation. Pardon me. We have a balance of 213,000, but yet it says 98% is used?
I'll have to check.
Yeah, that's not correct. Yeah. It's probably more like 60 or 70%.
Yeah. I'll see on my phone, up above. All right, I'll check into that. But that 213, that is the out-of-district. Part of it is we haven't received the bill yet, and they may set up my work and something else. Half the chances of the collaborative.
Do we have any more out-of-district than what we originally thought we were going to have? I mean, do we have any additions?
Oh, yeah. We had, we had one person go out, but we didn't. I think it's a, it was a, and I did meet with the sped director today, and there are two more pretensions.
Okay.
You know, the pretensions, we don't know when they'll go out. Could be the, could be January, could be, you know. She just keeps me updated on the out-of-district tuition. And, you know, when it might happen, it might happen soon, but she tried to give me the best answer that she, and she did, not to curly, because I commented to the superintendent today, she keeps me well aware of when the schools, the possibilities of going out. When are they going, and then we talk about the cost.
Okay.
And that's where I'm heading next. To the out-of-districts.
Page?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 21.
Thanks.
Now, the out-of-districts, looks like we're in a negative 74,000. We use the circuit breaker first, so we have to back the circuit breaker. As we get the bills in from the collaborative, the out-of-districts, we have to back that money out to pay the warrant, which will then offset, you notice that there are no monies expended in, other than 128,000 on the collaborative. There is no money spent in that expended call. So we're still moving that money. And you'll notice that, like, the mass public schools are minus 92. That may not be true, because when we use that circuit breaker money, when we back that out, we pay whatever bills come in. So if the collaborative bills come in for us, they get paid. If, you know, some out-of-district school, they get paid for it. When the money's gone, as I said, could be as late as December, before we back out the total circuit breaker money, and then I'll ask for transfers to balance everything out. So it could be as late as December.
May I ask a question about the, right above that, the sped wages? That says we have therapists, psychologists, and sped clerk. Are those all in-house?
Yes. And that's more than one therapist.
Well, it says therapists, but then it says psychologist. That should be multiples.
There's three of them.
And the sped clerk, I assume multiples as well. Okay. Are tho, what, how are they through the school? What contractor are those folks on?
Most of the clerks are the psychs.
Either.
The clerks are C.
Okay.
And the psychs are A.
Okay.
And therapists are A.
So like, in with the teachers?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I was just curious.
One of the other questions that came up today is about the outreach coordinators' part-time salary and where it would be charged. We were charging it to the high school extracurricular activities, but, but that was prior to, that was during the months of July and August. And we weren't sure where we were going to take that particular position this year out. Next year, we do have it on a line item, so we will keep that separate. So as we're building out this budget to actual, what we did was we decided to put it in central office with business clerical, and put it on that particular line item, because it is a district-wide, basically, district-wide person, or will become a district-wide person. So I don't need to, I hate to jump around, but I just say the particular one. Page 12. If you look at page 12, and you go down to near the bottom where it says business clerk, you notice extended in 2018, and then you look at 2019, differential is the outreach coordinator, 177. So what we, when, because this budget is so tight, what we did is we tried to notch into the budget. You know, I know that when we talked about that outreach coordinator, we talked about taking it out of choice. Well, you know, I don't want to do that, so we kind of put everything into the budget, using all the funds that we had. So we're right down to not much wiggle room as far as extras on this particular budget. But we can, if we had to, we could move it out. It doesn't, right now, we don't have to, so we just leave everything right there. So at this point, I'll entertain any questions upon the budget change.
Anyone have any questions?
It's not a question about the expenditure so far or anything, but just on that same page where you were just, page 12, can you help me understand what those building maintenance charges are?
Right. I'd have to go back and find out what they, what they actually are in 2018. Those were things that we did in the buildings that we don't have line items for.
I see. And so they were just-
It could be a construction thing, it could be part of a, I can go back to 18, the next meeting, I can tell you.
It was just more, I was just, I was wondering why there was no 19 budget already.
We wouldn't budget for that.
Okay.
Those were things that were done in the building.
Was 18, the batting cages, the-
Is that the TV studio?
TV studio doors and the fire alarms, the-
Yeah, a lot of it.
Do we have to do the elevator as well? Was that 18?
I think that was earlier, but I think high school might have been the air conditioning of the rooms.
That was one.
That was summer of, what?
That was the high school. Remember, we had the money in the inside rooms.
It was like 17, beginning of FY18.
But I can get you that information.
But, I mean, maintenance is supposed to be the job at DPW, right? Okay, so that was just a case where, that's why we don't have any budget for that in 19.
Correct.
But we did have to spend almost $100,000 in 18 on it.
Well, let's put it this way.
We did spend.
We did spend.
We did, we did spend. We didn't have to. We didn't have to.
But we could choose not to.
We chose to.
But no one else was going to pay for it for us?
That's right.
Okay. All right.
And-
Kind of late to the game on that one. Everyone's like, okay. Noted. Thank you.
Any other question?
I have a question, Paul. On page 14, under the high school, obviously, it looks like there's some kind of just error here in the software or whatever on the school team leader line towards the bottom. But the paraprofessional and subpar, is there not supposed to be a number in there? Is that-
They have no powers up there. They, no, remember, this is not a special ed power. This is a power.
Okay.
Paris.
All of theirs are special ed powers.
Oh, okay. All right.
If you go further into the budget to actual, you see that there are some sped powers.
Yep. Okay. All right.
That's on page eight.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving on to page 23, if I may answer your question. This is school choice. Beginning balance on school choice, and of course, the beginning balance on July 1st So on, on July 30th, we got our first payment of 66,468, and then two following payments of 47,346. The 10,000, $17.56 that you see there, those are expenses from FY18 that just got paid in FY19. That's all the charge for that. Other than the salaries for Camp Falcon, which are down below. And the reason why we charge those is we have a setup account set up for those. And that's where we charge it. I was able to cover all the supplies and materials that were used in Camp Falcon out of the budget. It was the FY18 budget to get them started, and pot out of FY19 budget. It wasn't a big one there. It was probably 30,000.
Great. So we should expect, then, at some point, to see this, we've authorized 355 to come out of this for 19, and we're going to start to see that as it, as-
I think we're paying on the rears, so it's going to be kind of this number.
Okay, that's 582. Okay.
But not until we've expended everything else.
Right.
We don't want to do anything, this is the whole game plan.
I love it, Paul.
Got it.
I love it.
We're going to just, I'll let that ride, and if I feel it's getting to the point where, you know, it's higher than I want, then I'll come back to the committee. But I have plenty of time to do that. It's not something that I have to make a decision on, you know, when to be, not going to move it over to that. We can do that.
Thank you.
Um, question.
In regard to the sign, is the funds encumbered through that or not?
The sign is encumbered.
Where?
FY18. FY18.
Okay.
It was authorized by the school community in FY18. That's where I had the funds. You know, I would never, I would never move forward and say, we're going to do the sign in FY19 and cover those funds in July, because a lot of things could happen in 12 months. So, yeah, that's all encumbered. The only thing that's not encumbered is, is the electricity. It's not a, it's a, it's a small amount.
Yeah, I forget if it was 2,500?
Yeah, probably $3,000.
For the year?
No, to, to install.
Wiring to the-
And that'll be on the maintenance line item, correct?
One time.
Yes, that will be on the-
Just so you know.
Yeah.
And we're going to have, it's going to be lit.
Yeah, good. It'd be hard to have an electronic sign without.
That will be tough.
That's a very expensive extension cord, isn't it? So, so if that's encumbered, then come back to the-
Just the sign's encumbered, not the other one.
Oh, I know. Oh, I got that. So then the 10,000 here, you say it was carried forward from 18.
Right.
That wasn't encumbered?
It was encumbered, but I had to bring it forward. I closed out 18.
Yeah.
So I bring the balance forward. It hasn't been paid, it's going to be paid against the 6,000.
You can see opening balance.
The next one is the revolving accounts. I do have one correction. The school career, that number should be 3762 on 26. And these are revolving accounts, school and community, it's a summer revenue, athletic games, seats, launch book, facility, they put the maintenance DPW in that.
So where does our Oktoberfest cash show up?
Your Oktoberfest cash is in the hashtag, we-mash.
Oh, okay. So it's not on here?
Is that the ice cream one?
Yeah.
No, the, you had the picnic.
They're both kind of in there.
Oh, they were both ice cream?
Yeah.
They were both ice cream.
Did you get the count on the-
Oh, yeah. We were, we were on the money in October. Yes.
Next thing, I'll show you how to do a couple of them.
Yes.
Yes. Not let 12-year-olds scoop the ice cream, I think would be.
That's true.
That would be helpful.
So that's in the activity account.
That is correct. It's in the student activity.
Okay. Gotcha.
Can we get next time a list of those with the balances?
I thought they emailed it to us. Student activity.
You're going to get it next month. The only reason why you didn't get it this month is they just got their statement. So, in fact, I got one today, coming up with a updated statement. So you'll get, you'll get it next month. I tried to get it in this month, but the bank didn't get that statement. And it goes to the treasurer for banks, the bank statements go to the treasurer, treasurer to the school, and they reconcile the limited act. So, yeah, definitely. On the, on the grants, you'll notice that there isn't any revenue. The revenue has come in, it came in after we've published, came in just a couple of days ago. So in the next, in fact, I just requested more funds. The way it works, Title I, the sister superintendent does a wonderful job on Title I, which she does, once she gets it approved, that's when we stop paying that money. Same thing with the two-quarter. You know that the two big grants, the Title IV and the Title V, we did get some money in, again, it was after I published it. So we do have funds coming in. The Indian Ed, you'll notice there, the revenue is right on inclusive preschool, we have not received funds yet, but we will. Usually, Desi sends us the first payment automatically, and then we have to request monthly payments. So I'll see my request today. I'll only repeat this once, it'll be in every packet monthly, but our FY18 reimbursement on Medicare is 313,507.
Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Yeah.
Are we going to have a tower grant on here?
No, tower grant? No, because we don't receive the money.
I thought it was monetary.
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did?
Remember, that's one of the two SEL grants.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can put those on.
So is the title, I'm sorry, were you going to ask?
So when I read your note about that, I was under the impression it was services only.
What note did I, I don't know which note you're talking about.
On the tower grant, I thought it was services only that we received.
No.
They're saying it's services and money?
No, it was all money, and we decided what services to provide with that money.
No, the previous tower grant was exactly two.
Yes. That was all services. That someone else wrote for us, this one we wrote, and so we get the money, and so then, but you have to spend it the way you said you would. And same with the other one, the innovation grant.
Are there any other questions?
I was just going to ask, Hope, what was Title I last year?
199.
Okay. Let's see. Love the judge.
We should include the tower and bring it on here.
I will. Could go all the way.
We can put a both, tower grant is two years, the school profit seller innovation one, we got it, we got it.
Yeah, two. Another question?
Nope.
If you have one, I have some budget transfers, please just to cover deficits in the budget. Do you want to vote?
So whenever I say a chance to look at it, will this need a motion?
Do you normally put it on the agenda as a voting item?
Is it not under that section?
I mean, it's...
Normally, we put budget transfer, the asterisk by it, and then...
We normally do.
I mean, we can, if that's a problem, we can push it off to you. It's not my bottom line.
So are we going to do it next meeting?
We probably should, just for, to keep things...
Not a problem.
Yeah.
It doesn't hold up for us.
Good. And thank you, Jeff, for noticing that.
You're very welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Funk.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have specifically unassigned, specifically assigned unfinished business?
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have the 2020 budget.
Nice try, nice try.
It's moving right along. It's moving right along.
So you have in front of you a six-month, not six months, a three-month, the first three months of FY19 as a summary for hashtag we mash B. And I just want to emphasize, this is not designed to be a business that's ever going to operate as a profit. We have it budgeted as basically, in my mind, sort of a cost center. When we have a, are fully sort of developed outreach program, it's a budgeted item. We can reduce some of the costs by revenues from sales. So anyway, at the top, you'll see some of the expenses. This is July, August, and September. So the total non-personal expenses were 85936. The personnel expenses are 11174. So the total expenses for the first three months of this fiscal year is 1203336. And I did want to point out that, and you have it attached here, the business plan that we had developed projected an annual budget of 47301. So one quarter of that would be 11825. So I think we're kind of close there. Then down below, we put the revenue from sales. There's the sales figure, returns and allowances, and then the cost of goods sold. And so if you net that out, the gross profit on sales for those three months is the 153589. And so what I did, in my mind, is I took the total expenses we've incurred so far, offset the gross profit. So for the first quarter, it's running at $10,49747, which is at least aligning with the plan. But I think originally, Mr. Funk and I worked together on this. He did have it reversed with revenue expenses like a normal business, but that, that I don't prefer to see a large loss, because it's not meant to necessarily make a profit. So, I flipped it around. Do you have any questions on what you see on this?
No, I think that, that last thing you just mentioned is important to note, that this was never set up to make a pro, you know, a huge profit and try to make, you know, money. It's an outreach.
It's not a store in Mashpee Commons that's going to go under because we're not making a profit.
Set up outreach.
So is this, I thought the signs operating in the store, that the outreach coordinator was going to be doing some other activities?
Yes, when that position hits full-time, there's, in the last packet where we showed that sort of communication outreach plan, there's a list of all the things that we want the outreach coordinator to do. So, but at 19 hours a week, that's not really...
So nothing's happened on that year?
We're piecemealing it and making it work, but it's not where we want it to be.
And when is that projected to go full-time?
July 1 of 19, FY20.
Pending funding.
And on the FY, on this FY19 column, this is expected to be coming out of choice, although I don't know what, if it flips a little bit with what you just said, but in the end of the year, that's where it was, I didn't put that next sheet on here, but on this original plan, it went to the next page, and it said funding sources, we had it coming out of school choice for the operation of this. So I don't know if it'll all end up coming out of school choice.
Well, I, you know, I just want to say that I go in periodically to meet the students that are working there and just kind of see what's shaken. And I've heard such great feedback from the kids that work there, saying that they really enjoy, it's not exactly a, you know, a demand, time, and, yeah, labor-intensive job. They, they are frequently working on their homework, and then people come in, and, you know, I take the opportunity to ask them what they're studying, you know, what classes they have at the high school, and I always learn something about some bit of our curriculum that we have to offer, and, you know, their interests and stuff like that. I mean, the one kid I met the other day was, I think he said he had AP Statistics and another AP class, and was, you know, it's just, I just think it's a great representation of our district, and I appreciate this. It's good to know we're not, you know, losing our shirts. But, but I do think that, especially after seeing all the stuff on the STEM tour today, that I think, I think we can expand the offerings in that store to be a lot more of things that kids are creating, and, you know, I'm curious what the sales are mainly coming from? Are they mostly apparel and...
It is mostly apparel. Today, when we were, we were at Southport, one of the ladies there that's working on the Giving Tree specifically said, we have a lot of requests on family lists for Falcon wear for younger kids. And she's gone there, so I connected with Lynn Harris to make sure that gets ordered soon, so that it can, that people can buy to fulfill those wishes. And then the other piece is, Lynn Harris is working with Paula Bell from Coombs, and they're creating a mini Maker Space Corner for sort of that younger group of kids figuring out how to make sure two iPads are secure in that area and all of that. And then I know that Mary Kate had some work that she was sending over to make sure we get a full representation across the district.
Okay, great.
So just a question for Paul again. So you said on the technology, the 355 is what was coming out of choice?
It's what we budgeted.
Well, that's what, that, you know, we, 355,000.
411.
411, 411 is coming out. That was the offset against the total budget. The school committee decided that the best way to do this is to, you know, charge to that, those line items, and we're at three, whatever it was, 3.8. And, you know, I'm looking at other line items within the budget to try and offset as much of that as I possibly can before we move into choice. So I have no, you know, not in the speed to stop going into the...
So just to make sure I understand, included in that 355, 47301 for...
Yeah. So it's included in there. We said that we were going to use that.
Right.
What I did was, we had, if you remember when you voted the FY18 budget, there were obligations that we don't know about, which are IBAS, some of the other things that we are contractual, that we have to do. What we did is we took that money and we used it to put the, I'll call it, the outreach coordinator into the budget. And then what we did is we, prior to doing that, we went back and we projected, who is actually going to retire? They have to let us know by December, I believe?
Well, they really only have to let us know early if they are eligible for any early retirement incentive. Other people can tell us two weeks ahead of time, and there they go.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the...
Yeah, for the bigger planning.
So, so we, I, this is, this is what I wanted to do, use all that money, and then as we get to the end of the year, you know, somebody may say, yeah, I'm going to retire in December, then all of a sudden they say, well, something's changed, you know, I'm not going to withdraw on my retirement.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to be clear, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so we're over the 350.
The 355 is the total of everything.
But those are the only two things. Because we've already taken out Camp Falcon. I already paid for all the supply, I can't get back. But a lot of it I paid out of 18, because in order to get the camp started.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, so we discussed this on the, at the last financial working group meeting particularly, and I just wanted to get this, get the meaning of the kind of hand wave of the committee about how this budget's setting up, because it's a little, it's a bit spooky to me right now, because we're at 348 already in technology, and we've also brought forward $10,000 for technology. So technically, we're already over our budget for technology, out of school choice, plus the $47,000 for, for...
Outreach coordinator.
Camp Falcon. I'm sorry, you, what you said, outreach coordinator. So that's $60,000. I mean, you know, so as we discussed before, is that, you know, we, we really, and I say we collectively, need to be willing to say no, because the technology budget is gone. And discretionary spending for technology needs to stop until we move forward farther into the budget cycle and see what kind of money we have. So we had a brief discussion about that, just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same thought process for that.
Yeah, but we're clear on that, so it's, it's not make-it-work time, it's, the stores close. And because we have to be able, we have to be able to say, we could not do this because we didn't, we didn't, it's not within our budget. I think that's the, that's what we, we need to be able to say to the town that we're, there are things we're not doing because we aren't, have not budgeted, there's no budget for it.
Can I just make one? We have not made any tech purchases since we've had that conversation.
Oh, no, that was...
So, no, I just, but I don't know if that was clear.
Yeah, no, I think it's just...
Massive viewing audience.
Full circle.
It has not, we have absolutely not made any purchases. The only thing that is different from what you're saying is if something breaks. Those are fixed issues that we may not have time to come back to you and talk to you about first, because depending on what it is, we may have to fix it for functioning to happen. We can email, you know, whatever, but that's it in terms of, we don't have anything else on the...
Yes, the, the, you know, nothing. It was like, it was...
Chaos.
No, it was...
Phones went down too, at the same time.
Must have been Comcast working.
I'll bring my hotspot over, I'll power the whole thing.
We'll be good to go.
Phones, literally, I'm on it and it just stopped. So, but I just, again, wanted to clarify that...
I just don't think I put that, I don't think George and I were very clear about that during the last meeting. I just want to make sure that, you know, we had a pretty good discussion about that, about, about making sure that, you know, and then the expectation from the working group and whatever that morphs into in the future was, that, you know, the people that develop these budgets below the leadership team, if they have, they need to include a contingency repair fund in their budget. It can't be, I'm going to spend my budget of $355,000, oh, sorry, six servers went down, we need to find $150,000. So, little bit of change management here.
I'm not a tech guy, I know, Chris, you know, usually you know when...
I wish that were true, but that's not at all true.
But the new system of coding for budgeting for FY20, what I said to the working group is, we've got this for 20. 19, we got to just kind of muddle through.
Absolutely.
But no, but they weren't there for that part. So the system is set for 20 in such a way that I am actually excited for it. But...
We're making good steps.
But we're not, it's not, we got to get through 19.
I guess the only clarification that I would add, though, is we know stuff is going to happen in between school committee meetings. The expectation, though, is that within the appropriation budget that currently exists, you're going to find the funds that are necessary for those things, and then...
Yes.
If you need to come back to the school committee subsequently...
Yes.
You will do that.
Yes.
But it's not a presumption of, I will spend today with the belief that I'm going to get approval later.
Isn't that what you just said?
No.
No, it's not. I think what, it's this, there, there could be, and again, I'm not speaking for five people, there could be the chance that you come back and say, hey, we had a $20,000 hit for technology, we had to remove that from this budget line item to pay for it. I know it's under a big number, right, a big umbrella. There is a chance that this group would say, okay, no. So there probably is a good idea to say, okay, yes, we had to spend this money on the fixing, and then we rely on you guys to say, well, if we don't get that $20,000, our curriculum's not going to happen, or...
Oh, no, that makes sense.
You follow what I'm saying?
Okay, yes, I understand you now, sorry. I didn't understand.
Thanks for the clarity.
No, it was not that. I need it twice sometimes, it's my learning style.
Don talks, the rest of us translate.
Stop it, that's not it.
He's just speaking a different level of finance.
I know, I'm just not smart enough to understand Don.
Thank you, Nicole, so I didn't have to say it.
Yeah.
That's clear.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody good there?
Yep.
All right. I don't want to move along too quickly, so, Mr. Bar, if you could continue on, please.
So, the next item is the FY 2020 budget summary that's in here, and just an FYI, November 13, from 1 to 2, is the meeting with the town manager to review the FY 2020 budget.
Superintendent's budget?
Yes, my budget.
And who goes with you to that?
So currently, it's, I believe it's Hope, myself, and Paul, and I recall in past years, there has been a school committee member present, so whoever would like to participate in that is...
Well, I, I don't know whether it's, I mean, I, I only went last year because our finance committee, I was like the alternate for George, but I think that would be you or George.
November 13?
Yes.
What day of the week is that, Tuesday?
Tuesday. I'm happy to attend if it's needed.
I will not be available that day.
I believe I am, so if George or nobody else can make it, let me know. So we'll check with George. He'll be priority. If he can't make it, then let me know, and I should be able to make it.
I'll help you out.
You said it was November 13, from 1 to 2?
Yes, from 1 to 2. And so of the narrative in here, do...
Bring some doughnuts or something.
Does anyone have any topics to discuss within the narrative that you would like to, you know, we looked at it, but this is a chance to further have conversations about my budget.
I, I had just a question that just occurred to me as we were talking about some of this other stuff tonight. Point me to, what is that, by bringing the Coombs to one-to-one on technology, where, what is the impact of that here? Is it, is it under this curriculum and technology line? Oh, no, that's personnel, sorry.
Well, it's under that one, under operating though, not the personnel.
Yeah. So is it, is it the $600,000? Or is that, I remember we moved something around in that line.
On the one-to-one, what line was it?
So we say in our request that the three things that we are, sorry, in Patty's request, that increasing the outreach coordinator to full-time, a new literacy curriculum program, and the addition of Chromebooks at the Coombs School to create a one-to-one learning environment. So I'm asking, what is the differential for that last piece, the one-to-one learning environment for the Coombs School? Is that the entire increase under line F, under FY 20? No?
No, because it's a software license.
Right. So which, how do I know, what, is it the 169?
No, I don't think it's that much. I think I have it, and I feel like it's $42,177.
You feel like it is? Sorry, you seem pretty certain.
That's a pretty good indication. I'm like somewhere around $42,000. $42,000.
So that's what it's gonna take to bring Coombs up one-to-one?
Three Chromebook parts, which is what they have said they need.
And that's part of the 3%...
Oh, how it explains? No, but wouldn't it be in one of the, because if in the technology number, there must be in the technology number, not the personnel. Oh, down here.
It's the overall.
It's in here. Okay, that's it. Oh, you think it's the other one? Okay.
Which represents the blue line and the orange line represents what we actually did receive as an appropriation. And then if you look in FY '20, what we're asking for exceeds the blue line. And down below the gap is $413,473, of which someone's asked for it.
We're adding, in theory, service, right?
Well, I don't know if we're adding services or we're trying to make up a gap we had in those years where we were below the blue line in terms of...
You have to look at that gap below the blue line for the previous years, going, starting at FY '17.
Right, but we've caught up and exceeded it.
We've never, I mean, we didn't actually receive the blue line in any of the previous years.
Well, we'd have to, I think, I guess we'd have to figure out what that offset is in that area.
Because we've now caught back up to where we would have been if we were getting that funding every year. And now we're going above that.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. So, just so anyone at home thinks we've caught up, because we haven't, because the FY '19 number is way down here.
No, but in FY '20...
In the request.
Right.
If we were to get what we asked for.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I know, but just the way you said it, I just wanted to make sure.
So in the request, we've, this shows that we've caught up to where we thought we would be if we were getting the 2.5% level service budget every year. And we're exceeding that by $413,000. Correct?
Well, that's the gap. So we know, and we know that the literacy program was to what?
$200,000.
So $200,000 of that is...
Is the K through 6 literacy.
This is K through 6 literacy.
Probably 25 is the outreach coordinator.
Didn't we put the whole batch in for FY '20?
50,000.
So it's the whole, so that's like, what, 46?
But the increase is, we're paying half time now.
Oh, yeah, the increase is 20.
Oh, the half time is in '19?
Yeah. And then another 42 for the Chromebooks we just said, or what did we say, 47?
Oh, wait, no, it would be the full increase because we're going from part-time school choice to full-time operational funds.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't think it was in the '19 budget.
Okay, so that still puts us a little short.
What about the...
Camp Falcon?
No, what about the salary increases?
No, those are included in your level service.
But just, you know, to note the blue line at 2.5%, but get steps, that's not...
That doesn't include service. That doesn't include salaries. It's an assumption of 2.5%.
Beating the majority of Unit A increases. Ah, that's it.
So we should maybe back-tech that. You should know that going into that meeting. Make sure that explains the additional piece. Don finds a problem with this chart every time we look at it.
Well, it's gondolade, so, but I can change it.
Say, maybe that's a sign.
I'm gonna add this up again, but the numbers don't match the chart, so I'm gonna...
The numbers don't match the chart.
The number, that's why I'm adding it again. I'm gonna assume human error. My human error.
It's not yours. Our Excel is. Student, they do math.
Does anybody else want cookies? Yeah, so this is, so here's my weirdness. So if you take the difference between the level service budget for '17, '18, and '19, and add that up, and then you remove the approved budget by the town of Mashpee, the difference is actually $1.7 million. So we should not be graphically portraying that we're catching up by that loss. We may be catching up, we just need to make sure we understand that. Yes, yes, if you look at this graph and you see the amount that we're requesting is over an assumed 2.5% guideline, but the $1.7 million below level service that we requested of the last three fiscal years is only a quarter of what we're asking for above the... Statistics lie, and liars use statistics.
Sure you can't be there on November 13th?
I can, I'm sorry, I'll be in Burlington. I can call in though. You're wrong!
You're out of order.
I'll have a tutorial.
Yeah, I think I got it as well.
Long story short, this area underneath the curve, right, which would be what, the derivative? This area underneath the curve right here is bigger than our new gap. Much bigger, four times bigger.
Right, but we filled part of that gap, or most of that gap with school choice.
But we're removing school choice out of this.
Right.
From all the numbers to make them...
Right, but you can't say that that gap was still there. We filled that gap with school choice to be able to maintain the level service.
Right, but I don't know what, this, the new, the new offset doesn't include school choice either.
Right. So when we're projecting now for FY '20 on a level service budget, we know that it's exceeding, and we've listed out, you know, the literacy program, which isn't in the budget, or was, was not a historical item. The fact that we're adding additional Chromebooks for KC Coombs, that wasn't there before. And then some other items that, you know, aren't, aren't what you would consider to be a level service budget, but are an enhancement. And that's, to me, is what represents that gap. And historically, what would have happened is we utilized school choice, but what we've made the decision is to request appropriation to cover that.
I think keeping in mind though that the blue line never would have fully covered personnel increases, not new hires, but salary, because of the steps, some, you know, even if they got a 2.25% increase annually, that gets added to a step. So if we're just getting to the half, it's strange.
I think we're, I don't want to move away from what the purpose of this graph was. And again, if it's determined it doesn't do us what we need to do, then it's fine. It's to show that we have not been level service funded over the last three budget cycles. And it, I mean, I understand that we filled the gap utilizing school choice, but I believe that was under protest.
No, and I think that's fine, Jeff, but the point then is being very clear to articulate, you know, what those additional items...
What includes in there? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 100% agree. Yeah, 100% agree.
Non-historical items.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Because that's, you know, that in my mind is where you're gonna get the biggest pushback on.
We also, I mean, we should, maybe we should change this, you know, blue line to match the actual salary increases, you know, because then I guarantee we're not gonna be past that blue line.
Well, or, or you, you don't, this is a, this is a retrospective chart. And I think part of the problem is you add in a prospective potential FY '20 proposed budget. And if you are, just if you cut this at FY '19, that tells the story that you want to tell. The problem is when you bring in FY '20, that's not real, then you have to explain, you have to explain stuff. But without '20, it's pretty straightforward.
And the other thing too is, I wonder if it's actually more important to add the line, starting right at FY '17. Remember how we talked about what are, what the gap, what the required gap would be? I'm sorry, what the required budget, we spoke about what the required increase in budget by percentage would be in order to catch up. And it went from 5% to 8%, to 10%, to 12%, right? I'm just throwing numbers out there, but it went up exponentially. If we added that to this point at FY '17 where the budget started to go down, you would see a pretty significant increase in an actual budget that would be required to maintain level service and recover from the deficits. And it would be well below what we're asking for now. So, I'm good with, you know, I'll make a budget. I mean, I'll make a graph anyway Patty wants it, you guys want it. But I do understand what you're saying, that whatever, Patty needs to have enough ammunition, whoever goes in there to say, "Okay, that increases this," but that blue line doesn't reflect actuals. It's, you know, our, it was our assumptions we wanted to do about, you know, being, we made, we made decisions as a group, what we would like our budget to do, and we assumed that we would like to maintain around 2.5%, 3%. But in reality, it's hard to do that when your salaries are increasing over 3.5%. Difficult to do. Good stuff, Don.
I have one question. The graph below that, you might want to explain your FY '20 number somewhere? Because that's projected, right?
Yeah, I have a chart. There was rationale behind it.
I didn't make this graph.
I have the backup for those numbers, so I can bring that with me. I didn't explain it, but...
Yeah, if we use it anywhere else, I would just put a little asterisk by that FY '20 that indicates it's projected and not, we're not clairvoyant or we don't have some predictive capacity at estimating enrollment.
We should probably make that line dotted too. And you want to, going back to the other one, do you want to change that actual budget to level service funded? And maybe say, "Actual budget to level service requested," or "Actual budget to level service requirements," or something like that, or "Level service assumptions?" Because it's nearly not funded.
Aren't the numbers that were listed there, that is the approved budget, right?
That's the actual budget, yeah.
Right? And you just extrapolated a trend line.
Yeah, but blue is the problem, because it's not level service funded. It's like level service estimated or...
Level service swag.
But you can't say estimated for history. That is what it is.
No, we started, we started from FY '13 and increased it from 2.5%, actually FY, yeah, '13 and just increased it 2.5%.
It is, and we're just saying, we think that's what a, what a level service budget could have looked like at 2.5% if we had gotten those increases each year. But those aren't real either. The real number is just the ones, the approved budget by the town.
Right. That's the only one.
But I do think the title is confusing.
Yeah. To what should be. Don will come up with something.
He will. What should we call the blue line?
You've got 30 seconds, Don.
And go.
Do you want to phone a friend?
I didn't actually mean now. I just thought maybe he would have a suggestion after.
Yeah.
Send me a thought.
Yes.
On the, on the Chromebooks, are we also planning to ask that that be part of the capital appropriation?
We do, we do have technology included in capital. We're assuming we're only gonna get, what they've been getting recent years is $30,000. So there's, whatever we get there, we probably could make a little adjustment.
Okay. But we would ask for it there too.
It's on, it's, there is Chromebooks in there.
Either or, right? We don't honestly care which one it comes out of, as long as it's...
Well, we're good for capital, but... Any other thoughts on this? And I know we did talk in the finance working group that, so this is mine that went to the town manager. We can modify versions of this depending on future audiences. But this will probably be in the budget binders that get distributed to select people in finance. So my budget before, it's your budget.
I wonder if we're gonna be on the budget.
Really?
So if we're gonna change anything, are we gonna start looking at the other one?
That's only hers.
Ruining your perfect tracker.
Hers, okay. They don't need to make their changes.
Unless you can do all these in five minutes.
Okay, I just...
Yeah, no, if you want any...
The rest would be easy.
We don't have to make it...
I'll take that back.
Yeah.
You don't have to make it tomorrow.
So when are...
Well, he has it. Terry was gonna make copy.
What's the timing then for the school committee to be reviewing in detail the budget?
I, I think somewhere in...
I believe that's next, next month, correct?
Right. Just, okay, December is a date that we have to put our little summary in the news.
Yeah.
You're voting on the budget at the, January 16th. I think it's the January, your public hearing, I think, is the 2nd of January. You're voting on the 16th.
Yes.
January 2nd, school committee votes on FY 2020 budget. January 18th, school committee recommended FY 2020 budget due to the town manager.
So you're voting on the 2nd.
That's why we put it down.
No, the public meeting's on the 2nd.
On the 16th.
Voting on the 16th.
Voting on the 16th, yeah. We should probably add that in there, huh? On the major step timeline, when, the day we're voting.
Oh, so public hearing is December 12th. School committee votes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, December 12th is public hearing, my bad. So we vote on the 2nd.
Oh, okay.
Well, then you have to talk about it next month.
The 2nd, and the January 18th is when it goes, is due at the town manager. So, yes, we only really have November to continue to figure out any changes you want to make to my budget.
Do you still have some feedback from the town manager if we now have...
It's the day before. Oh, yeah, it is. The meeting will be November 13th.
Right. Alright, so you'll have feedback.
We will. Time.
Oh yes, that's right, we will.
In fact.
Does anybody else have anything on that?
Nope. Let's move on.
Nope, good, Don. Alright, if we can shoot any other questions or comments, so is Patty, if nobody else has anything. I know you're, correspondence?
Correspondence, I just want to share two quick things. This came from Gail Jones, Dear Mrs. DeBoer, on behalf of the Mashpee Congregational Church, I wish to express our sincerest gratitude to all of the students who volunteered at our pumpkin patch on September 29th, 2018. Their commitment to work on such an endeavor was exemplary with incredible teamwork with every volunteer for the entire morning. Again, thank you so much for your assistance in contributing to a wonderful yearly event for the town of Mashpee. That was mostly football players who unloaded the pumpkins from the big truck.
Nice.
Yeah. And then sharing this email from a parent, Dear Mr. LaBelle, I felt the need to reach out to you and tell you how truly impressed my husband and I have been with our son's teacher, Mary Cremmons. Our son was having a difficult time transitioning into first grade and grasping the new rules and routines, and Mary reached out to us almost immediately so we could work together to help him adjust. After just a few days of open communication, we saw a media and significant improvement in our son. He thrived on the connection Mary had established both with him and with us, and his excitement for learning and for school is back. My husband and I would like to recognize Mary for her outstanding efforts on our son's behalf. In my eyes, she has gone above and beyond as a teacher, providing us with daily talking points for how our son has been doing and improving. Some teachers may have waited until parent-teacher conferences in November to let us know how much our child was struggling, but Mary, as busy as she is, was proactive about the situation and took the time because she truly cares about her students. It is teachers like Mary and of course, Michelle Richmond, she was shouting out the previous year, who remind us what a fantastic school system Mashpee has and how much we love that our child is at Casey Coombs. You should be so proud of your staff, so, that was nice.
Alright, good stuff.
Thank you.
Not bad for an up and coming school district.
That's right, we are up and coming.
And that's, I don't know, that's a, a single, you know, one case, but that's something that I hear a lot about teachers continually reaching out to parents and trying to get help with students, so it's great to hear. Alright, so speaking of our next school committee meetings and what we're doing, next item on the agenda is to discuss a potential consolidation of future school committee meetings.
It's an agenda.
Gender.
It's in your packet for listening, please.
Yep. So, we're still not in any position to vote on anything, but you know, we're just going to, if anybody has any comments or discussion on this, we plan on discussing this at the efficiency and effectiveness group, but we have not met yet since the last meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for, I believe, is it next week? I'll have to look at my calendar, but we do have a meeting with, yeah, George and I and, and the 15th, okay, so we will be meeting soon, but in the meantime.
But that's after, isn't that after the next school committee meeting? Yes.
Which is fine.
We'll do it December.
Yeah.
Make any changes, because nothing would be changing in the next few months.
Yeah, this next few months.
Yeah, so the opportunity is in the spring, basically?
Right.
I believe so.
March through June.
Definitely after the budget vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't see a reason why, definitely June can't be combined.
Mm-hmm.
March and April potentially could be also combined.
And why not May?
It's election, around election time, so it's probably, and we also do.
Because otherwise you're not going to have a meeting until June.
It's also when we do superintendent evaluations as well, so.
So May, is it May 7th, Election Day? Must be.
Is it?
It's the first Tuesday, right? Yeah. So can we dispense with this at some point?
Dispense with this?
Yeah, meaning like, can we have a vote at the next meeting, maybe combine March, April, and June?
So if, if we have a loose consensus, it would, you know, we don't really need to discuss this at the next, you know, effective and efficiency meeting, but if the committee as a whole doesn't feel that either we don't want to combine any, or we can't come to some kind of general consensus, then it is something we should bring back and kind of figure it out, but we don't need to, so yes, we potentially could vote on it next meeting. I know George isn't here, which kind of makes it a little difficult to feel everybody out on how they feel on it, but, but if we had, say, two or three dates that we kind of loosely agreed on, on the committee, we can put that on the agenda to, you know, vote to combine those.
Okay.
Of the elections, the.
7th.
7th. They just be held.
Yeah, I personally think we should leave May alone.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But I, I think March and April and June can be handled in a single meeting.
Yeah, let's do it.
My only request is that, that we don't put any extra work that we're going to lose time to do, and as a group during these potentially three lost meetings, onto the working groups?
Yeah.
Because I don't have any more bandwidth for any extra working group time.
But you are about to, because you are losing.
No, it doesn't work that way.
I'm just kidding.
I can spend all the time you want at night.
Yeah.
But I would also.
Bandwidth in the day is getting less and less.
Something to think about over the next month before we vote on this is that, to consider that the meetings will likely go longer, because we're going to have to fit more into one agenda, so we'll have less meetings, but that one meeting will likely last longer, as, as they typically do with the combined meetings we have now, anyway. So just keep that in mind over the next month before we make the vote that, you know.
That's the trade-off.
Yeah.
No, I think, well, I personally think that we're already sort of seeing benefits of the working groups in reductions of things on our agenda and things that are happening with Patty, you know, kind of taking the lead on those things, so I, I hear you, but I, I think, and if we could get that efficiency and effectiveness group to report back with something. You're going to be blown away. Yeah, I think, I, I'm pinning a lot of my hopes on that one, so, but yeah, I think it's.
Okay.
So you can, maybe you can talk with George.
Yeah, well, why don't we at least, you know, well, at least have it.
No, we didn't.
Well, at least have it as of now, penciled in, penciled in for the agenda.
The proposed change that you can vote.
Yep, pencil it in there, that way, I mean, if we have it on there for a vote, George can, you know, still say what his piece is, and we don't need to necessarily approve all three.
And there's no limitation for, as long as it's got a posting, we posted in advance, there's no limitation on how many meetings we can schedule off, off this meeting.
Exactly.
If something comes up.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yep, alright, good. So we'll pencil that in, and as of right now, we're kind of looking at March, April, and June. Alright, nobody else has anything else to add on that, we'll move on to the next item under new business. Mr. Boer?
So, so far, Gail's had very little response to, I forget if it's five responses that said they could come, so I did say that maybe she should call them as well, what she did was email.
Well, I, I just realized though, this is the Wednesday night before Thanksgiving.
No, it's after Thanksgiving.
Oh, 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 no, sorry, I'm looking at the night, my calendar jumped to 2019 for some reason, okay. I was going to be like, damn, I can't even be there. Okay.
So I think she'll do that one extra piece to call, but it, it may not be something that works, we're not sure. But we'll communicate back, I mean, well before the next school committee meeting, because that's too close to the time, if it doesn't end up happening.
So that's a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. So that's all I have on that. What the next?
Uh, yes.
So we have a tuition waiver request, this is a student who's a senior, so this is from the mom, I would like to request a tuition waiver for A.D. for this school year, grade 12. She's been in the Mashpee School District since preschool, and would like to finish out her senior year at MHS, and she, we have no seats left in grade 12, there were two and they were taken.
So you would, did they put a, she would put a status?
Well, this is also not indicated with a vote.
That needs to be a vote though, but.
Although it won't.
If you vote the next time, it won't, she's not going anywhere yet, so we're not going to kick her home.
So why is the, just clarification, why is it a request for a tuition waiver if there are no, oh, so she would.
If there was a choice seat, she would have moved into that.
I see.
There's no way, and she's now a non-resident, because they moved over the line.
Got you.
But she's currently attending another school.
No, no, she's with us. They just recently moved, and so she was coming, being honest.
Yeah.
That was nice.
Okay, so that, we'll vote on it next time?
We'll have to vote on that next meeting, yeah. And if you could put that request in the packet as well.
Yes, I will.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, redacted, yeah, obviously.
She originally had completed a school choice application, but.
Alright, and the next thing is the, you know, at town meeting, they did vote to add a school committee rep to the capital improvement planning committee, and so you can start to decide who that might be, but according to Terry Cook, that is not a this year addition to the plan, it's a next year.
Oh, okay.
So even though they're getting ready to have those meetings, this does not take effect till the next year.
So it's for FY '20?
Supposed to be a voting member on the.
Because now it's up to seven, they added two, because they couldn't make it even, so, another member at large.
So is that something that would go on in May after the reorganization, that's when?
We could add it as a.
Yeah, probably, that's probably a good idea, because we may, may not have a new member.
We know how, the frequency with which that committee's going to meet, we know anything about.
You can find out by me.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we'll know too, from the experience we have for this fall, will we go with our capital improvement request?
Yeah, okay. I assume it's going to be monthly.
I think it would be tight span, multiple meetings.
Yeah, I don't. Oh, I see, so not an annual commitment, it would just be compressed in a, okay.
Alright, good, so yeah, we'll add that for the, the May reorg.
Yep.
Alright, well, nobody else has anything on that one, then we will move on. I do not have any other items, if anybody else has anything that, yes, sir?
Do you want to discuss the delegate?
That's.
For MASC.
It's just what I have.
Great idea.
I believe it's the last meeting we have before we have somebody.
Yes.
I am not a hundred percent sure that, how many meetings I can make at the conference, so I don't want to throw myself into the bin, I know you're having some issues.
Unfortunately, yeah, you read, got my email that I will not be able to make it, so.
I mean, I, I went there last time, it was, it was actually a productive meeting with the MASC, Jeff, I forgot his last name, supposedly his name is the same as mine, Sweat, Jeff Sweat, the, is the division, the division president, and he just, we sat down in a big group in one of the little areas, had a discussion, there's also a delegate meeting, I think in the morning.
That was actually on like Wednesday morning as well.
Yeah, it was weird, it was weird too. You really have to look in the book and figure out when the delegate meeting is, because it's not well-publicized. But you, it's, I mean, you're a voting member for MASC to, when, I think they did some, gave everyone pay raises except for the school committee members last year. But anyway, I, I, I don't want to put my hat in the ring, I'd love to do it, I just unfortunately can't guarantee I'll be there.
I would expect it to be Wednesday, because if I remember last year, that was a confusion, it turned out to be Wednesday, was the delegate meeting.
Yeah. And I'm out of town that return week, so.
Okay. I guess it's me. I mean, the only thing is, I, I'd love to know when the delegate meeting is, so I can make sure. I'm on the website. Okay. I, I downloaded their app today, it supposedly was updated, but I can't see anything about the agenda on here, so.
I mean, I, you know, me personally, I mean, just me, I mean, it's, if we can make it, we make it, I mean.
Well, I plan on being there for most, if not all, the conference.
Can be there for your awards ceremony?
I'm going to collect my hardware and.
Yes.
It says, the 2018 delegate assembly will be held on Friday, November 9th, 2018.
So, did we look at Wednesday, because, just to make, because I, I believe that's what happened, I showed up on Friday and I said.
It says it.
Oh, I'm the delegate, they said, oh, the meeting was two days ago.
Yeah, that's.
But I feel like that's like a combined versus each division's meeting, like we have a superintendent's, we have our little division meeting, so.
Well, the delegate doesn't have to go to that meeting.
Which one?
The, the Division Seven, are we seven?
Yes.
Division Seven meeting, anybody can go to that, and just the, the voting, the one where everybody, the delegates vote for whatever mask is putting in their bylaws is the important one.
That's Friday.
That's Friday.
But it, it does say that the member districts may designate a school committee member as a voting delegate and notify MASC using the official delegate form no later than October 19th, 2018, what's today?
October 24th.
Boom, there you go.
Great. I mean, I think we can, but there is an official delegate form, it's very official.
I remember this.
Well, well, at least, if you don't mind, we'll at least submit it.
No, that's fine.
With, with your.
I'm happy to do it. It says, sorry. With great power comes great responsibility. Friday, November 19th, at 3:15 PM. At 3:15 PM, okay. I'll put that in. And then they're on the website, which I can share with all of you, are the resolutions, and so you would just read them and tell Nicole how you want her to vote.
Okay.
So I'll send those out now, but Gail's going to sign her out, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Did we find out about my question about the awards supper? About getting us add to that, how are we supposed to do that?
Oh, we did, we added everybody.
Okay.
Although we might have removed you.
Now we need to take people out.
Because I heard Gail calling to say if somebody can't come, we paid for them.
I told her I was going to be there.
I think after the last one, we thought everybody, I, I, that was on me, I just assumed.
Because we want.
Nicole's going to be there by herself, eating on the empty table.
Well, so be me hoping, Patty.
Yeah.
Sam wants to come, I don't have some.